We have people on the board that don't know what they're doing, like, um.
Don't know.
It's a nursing service center. Printing a couple of jackets.
I'm tired of your balloon head.
Carrie, are we live?
Yes, we are.
I call the Norton City Council meeting to order for Monday, March 4th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated, please. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Gaynor?
Here.
Mr. McLone?
Mr. McLone is excused.
Mr. Karen?
Here.
Mr. Towesley?
Here.
Ms. Whipke?
Here.
Mr. Pilot?
Mr. Pilot is excused.
Mr. Kernan?
Here.
Public comment. And we will begin with Teresa Balog. Please step forward, give your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Okay. Well, good evening. Again, my name is Teresa Balog. I live at 2883 Rich Road. Thank you for allowing me the time to present this request from the residents of Rich Road. I'm presenting a letter that is signed by the residents of Rich Road asking that the road be paved this year. The road has been placed on the list in the past, but it has not been repaved. The road has many potholes that have been filled many times, and in some places, the road is now down to the base. This season alone, I have called three times to have the potholes filled. My councilman can attest to this because I've talked to him in regards to the condition of the road. Others in the neighborhood have also called the road department about the potholes. So, in conclusion, the Rich Road residents would like the road placed on the list to be paved this year. The Rich Road residents are asking councilmen to drive the road personally and see and feel the condition of the road. I have enclosed, for those council people that could not, because of time restraint, view the attached, and I have attached photographs to the letter I have presented. Also, I would like the list of the roads that are going to be paved in 2019 if Rich isn't on it, and I would also like the criteria of how these roads are selected. Again, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just tell you that if you want any documents from the city, you just need to come in and do a public records request, okay?
Um, question then.
Mm-hmm.
When will you be coming out with that list?
We are actually beginning to look at that, at that list now.
Then I guess I'm in a good time to come and present this.
Your timing's perfect.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And may I add real quick, Mr. President? Thank you for taking all your ti- I know that wasn't easy putting all that together. Thank you for taking the time. And I will give you my commitment that I will drive that road sometime this week.
Please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Lee?
Good evening, everyone. Judith Lee, 3227 Creekside Drive, Norton. Mayor Zeta and council, I thank you for allowing me this opportunity. This is a sad day for me. But I wanted to commend Norton on the excellent job, and I'm proud to say that I'm proud to be a resident of Norton. Thursday, I believe it was, with the Norton Women's Club, the City of Norton firefighters came out and gave us a lesson in CPR and taught us what to do should we come into an emergency and how to perform CPR. Needless did I know that two days later, I would come home to find my daughter in full cardiac arrest. United States Warrant Officer Rashonda Nicole Lee, a private pilot, had just gotten a scholarship through an association of women pilots called Sisters of the Skies. They awarded her, three weeks ago, a $3,500 scholarship. Needless did she know that Express Jet was there to offer her a position with them as a pilot. She was excited and ready to continue to go, but a couple of weeks prior to that, she had developed some physical problems. As we know, a lot of women have problems with fibroid tumors. Through that, she began to start hemorrhaging, and the doctors worked with her enough to get her hemoglobin and her blood count back up enough for her to go get her scholarship. She and I flew to Atlanta, Georgia, and she got her scholarship, and she came back and was prepared to have her surgery. Saturday, I had a board meeting, and I came home from the board meeting, and I went up to her bedroom where she was laying on the ca- uh, on the bed, watching TV. She seemed to be fine. I asked her, has she had dinner? She said, no. I asked her, was she hungry? She said, yes. She said, as a matter of fact, Mom, can you run around to Acme and get me a fruit salad? I said, yes, I'll be more than glad to. I got in my car, drove around to Acme, got the fruit salad, and came back. I came back into the door with groans and moans coming from up so- up in her room, and I had no idea what was going on. By the time I got to her room, she was incoherent and squirming around in the bed. I immediately called 911, and some professional gentlemen from Norton firefighters came running into my home. They did everything they could to save my daughter. They did CPR in my driveway with her in the ambulance and worked on her until they was able to get her over to Akron General Hospital where they continued the CPR. But unfortunately, they could not save her. But the effort that I sat there and watched these gentlemen put everything that they could into my baby, I was so proud. And I just want to commend you, Mayor Zeta and the community, for all that you did. This is the type of work that we like to look and see our community leaders doing. So I just want to take this time to say thank you from the Lee family. Mayor Zeta, as her being a United States Warrant Officer, representing the City of Norton, I would like to ask for you to write some type of proclamation that I can share with the community of Norton on how blessed you are to have a woman who not only served her country, but expired to be airline pilot. She went in the Army to fly the Army helicopters, and she trained on that. And so she was so compassionate about her aviation career. She was a Kent State graduate in the area of aeronautical science. So I thank you for this time and ask that you, and once again, say thank you. God bless you all.
On behalf of the residents of the City of Norton, our condolences go out to the family.
Ms. Lee, thank you for coming in. I know that was difficult, and I know we're all certainly sorry to hear about your loss. And we are so appreciative as a community and as a people. With what your daughter gave us, that won't be forgotten. I hope it won't be forgotten. And our prayers are with you.
I thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Committee of the Whole. Application for renewal of agricultural district for Susan Dayton. Mr. Gaynor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I guess we, Resolution 35, 2019, we just want to make a motion to move that on the agenda next week. There is going to be a public hearing soon.
I believe it's next week also, is it not?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to add Resolution 35, 2019 to the next council agenda for first reading. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Karen?
Yes.
And Mr. McLone is out. Okay. Letter B, paving bids. Mr. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recommend we move, move that we put ordinance number 36, 2019 on the agenda for next week's council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to put ordinance 36, 2019 onto next week's agenda. Is there any discussion regarding that?
I had a couple of questions here.
And actually, I'm going to back up just a minute because that's under service, so I would need Mr. Towesley to second that motion.
Okay. Does the other second need, was it ever seconded?
Mr. Pil- well, Mr. Uh-
Does that need removed, or does it not matter?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, I will second that.
So I have a motion and a second to place it on the agenda. Is there any discussion, further discussion regarding that?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions that don't have a strong bearing on the passage of this, but just for my own education, perhaps, this is the first I've had to do this. Where is Superior Paving located? They look like they have the best bid. Where are they located?
North Canton.
Okay, so it's not terribly far. And then, in this, there were six respondents. How do we do that? Do we post that somewhere publicly, or do letters go out specifically to paving companies?
In accordance with the Higher Advice Code, it's publicly advertised for 15 days minimum. 14 plus one day is actually what the code states. We put it on our website, and Josh may have advertised it on a construction website, but I don't know. Last year, we advertised it on the Dodge Report, which is a website that contractors go to find these type of items.
Okay. I just, I wondered, just because the next ordinance is going to come up. There were only two respondents, and there were six on this. I kind of wondered what that process was, so thank you. That's all I have.
Any, any further discussion regarding that?
Mr. President, I guess I would ask-
Mr. Towesley.
If the administration could maybe answer some of the questions that were asked by Ms. Balog, Balog, I'm sorry. I don't see that road on here, so I want, just want to be upfront.
Correct. It's not on there. The list is not public until it's been introduced to council. So, we have a Benza report that was conducted in 2015. It's a compilation of the city engineer and the city's street superintendent made recommendations, and we forwarded those recommendations for bid. If you recall, last year, when we bid two streets that aren't on there, they would have eaten up our entire road budget last year. Two streets with minimum residence. So, there is some extra contingency money. There are a couple of streets that we have identified. But again, there, there are a lot of streets in the city that are in disrepair. And Mr. Towesley, you and I have talked many a times of, of roads that require significant work. We, we've done the, we've done, essentially, we put together what roads cost us enormous amounts of time in terms of personnel and/or work, meaning how much patching we put, things like that. And these are the recommendations that Josh and Larry have put forth.
Okay. Thank you. The, I know that we have the total bid here, and I think that I saw an email come out where it was broken down, street by street. Did we ever see that, or did you ever send that to us?
There, there were four alternate bids.
Okay.
And, and let's just understand why we do alternates. So, we bid a specific package, meaning all the roads excluding the alternates. We add the alternates into the bid so that if the bid is lower, meaning that, we only have so much money budgeted.
Right.
So, we, we want to make sure we try to maximize what, I mean, even, even if you see the total bid is about $100,000 less, but with the 10% contingencies, we use all the money we have budgeted.
Right.
So, the idea is to make sure that if the bids were to come in high, one of the concerns we had is all ODOT bids are coming in at 20th, well, you saw with Cleveland Masson Road, but some are coming in 20 to 30% higher than the estimate. So the concern we had was, if it comes in more than 10%, we have to reject all those bids. We want it to be a fast second in terms of the bidding, because Barberton bid theirs two weeks ago, and ours were opened up after theirs. So the people that bid on our contract had an opportunity to see what people bid in Barberton, made our process more competitive. And ultimately, we result in a lower price, hopefully resulting in more streets to be paved. But we bid the alternates so that if the base bid comes in at 10% more than what we have budgeted, we could pay it. And then subsequently, if it comes in under like it did, we could do all the alternates, which we are recommending. If you look at the bid tab, you'll notice that Superior is the lowest bid, including all the alternates. Sometimes you'll find bidders will bid low on the base, high on the alternate. Alternates. Well, Superior is both low on the base bid and low on the alternates. So when you add them all to aggregate, they are the lowest bidder by, I think, about $50,000. So the hope is, to answer your question, Mr. Towesley, the hope is, if we can realize some savings through the pavement process. Now, what we did last year, we did an inch and a half base and then an inch and a half overlay. But that inch and a half was an average, so at the end of the pavement project, we had a little bit of extra money left over. If we have money left over, we'll do a couple more streets. That's the intention.
Were any of these streets that are on this, we had talked before previously about, if we're going to fix these streets, let's fix them right and fix them to last, right? So that we're not going back. Do any of these streets require any of that, or are these?
Yes.
Okay. Could you explain that a little bit?
Okay, so, for example, Fair Oaks. Fair Oaks, the, one of the things, next, we're talking about curb repair. If you look at the curb on Fair Oaks, we have a, it's tilted, it's, it's really not conducive to really proper street contouring. So, we need to do some curb repair there. We also need to do some, some base repair. Fair Oaks, Green Ridge, those areas out there, those three streets specifically have had some significant damage from a garbage truck. They require some significant repair, much like Johnson Road, that's digging that out, the base out, reinforcing it. Unfortunately, though, some of those take significant time. Larry and I had a discussion this week about what our priorities are going forward in terms of getting our crossovers repaired and getting the roads ready for repavement so that, again, when we put a million dollars into our road program this year, we're not wasting that money. Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else? I think there's a motion and a second on the table. The clerk call the roll.
Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
We have a letter C, concrete repair bids. Mr. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to move that we add ordinance number 37, 2019 to the next week's council.
Before I second, could we discuss this?
Generally speaking, we would take a second, and then we would discuss.
Okay. Well, I just kind of want to know when I'm exactly seconding before I second.
You'd like to do it another way, that's fine.
I would appreciate it.
Okay, that's fine.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Basically, what does this involve, I guess?
So, if you recall, last year, we did a couple slab repairs on the road out here. Columbia Woods, sorry. I'm not like the roads right up front here. Columbia Woods. My concern was, we should be bidding these projects out one lump sum, trying to get a better price for massive quantities, rather than trying to piecemeal them together. So the idea this year was to bid, to bid these goods or services. Ideally, these bids come out in October. You bid concrete repair, materials, materials and supplies. We're a little bit late on the concrete repair, but it doesn't really matter because we wouldn't have done much repair anyway. But the idea is so that we have an idea going forward for budgetary purposes, how much repair we can do in the following construction season. This will allow us to do, Larry has some serious concerns with the Frazier allotment. There's some significant deterioration of some of the concrete streets there. The problem with, with concrete streets, I don't say it's a problem, they have a longer life expectancy, but, but they require more in-depth repair, and that's what we're doing here. Larry, who's still here, can speak to it. It's, it's, uh, they, they bid it by the slab, and it's eight inches, I think it's eight inches thick, so to handle the vehicle traffic. So the idea is that we would bid this, rather than just entering into a contract for one specific slab. It gives us a better price overall.
So the hope is this will cover everything that we have planned for this year?
It's not going to be, unfortunately, it's not going to be really close. This is a good bid, but it's not close to really what we need to do to get some of our streets up. Like Frazier, I encourage you to look at Frazier. It's, it's really in disrepair, too.
Okay, and, and my next question is, the Exhibit A that we've been given, could you explain that to me? I'm not understanding it. And is there a way that we could, in the, this next week's council, could get a copy of both bids? From what I'm looking at, I'm not understanding is, it appears the one that was awarded is, there's not numbers, the numbers on it are money numbers, so maybe that's what I'm misunderstanding.
So the way Josh chose to bid this was to say there's a $40,000 allotment of funds.
Okay.
Okay? And how much concrete repair can you get for $40,000?
I see. That makes more sense.
So, you're going to get, so the reason we're giving it to Perrin is you're going to get 155 more square yards of concrete for their bid versus the Spanos Brothers. And you're going to get 56 feet, linear feet, of curb, more linear curb, than you would if we would choose Spanos. I mean, I'd be glad to provide you with the bid documents. That's fine.
That would be great, and that, that makes a lot more sense now that you explained it, so I appreciate that.
I won't say that that's the, my first choice in how we bid it, but it was with the recommendation of the engineer, so I kind of went with the recommendation of my expert.
I'll, I'll second the motion at this point.
There's a motion and a second to approve for next week's council agenda. Is there any other discussion? Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
All right, moving on to letter D, purchase of two vehicles for the Norton Police Department. Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're looking at, at getting two Durangos to replace two of our Chargers in the program. As I understand it, we're going with the Durango so that we have more flexibility during the heavy snow. Did we have issues this year?
We, we did. We had a little bit of issues. You've got to remember, the Dodge Chargers sit awfully low. These SUVs will sit a little higher. We've also had problems with rooms for the, for the officers in the vehicle and the driver's side, and also getting prisoners in the backseat of those Dodge Chargers. Over the last couple of years, they've really shortened the length of the Dodge Charger, which has made it extremely difficult to get people in and out of.
Okay. Actually, we're, this is just following our replacement vehicle program for the police department, and our mechanic actually recommended that we replace cars 62 and 67. We took in two separate bids. One of them was from Fred Martin, and for both the vehicles, it would have been a total, it'll be a total of $47,258. Fred Martin actually takes trade-ins, so for our 2017 Dodge Charger, out of the price of, I had it here somewhere, $32,379, we're actually getting $11,000 trade-in on the 2017. And car, car 67, our K9 vehicle, is a 2015, and we're getting $6,500 trade-in. The other bid that we took was from G A, GSA Auto Choice, and they were wanting a total of $62,620, and they don't accept trade-ins. So we're getting a far better deal going with Fred Martin, as well as their local company. So they more than meet the standards, and said this is just something that we normally, we're trying to take care of our different vehicles and all the different service department and police departments, so we're not sitting here with them falling apart. Anybody else want, before I make a motion?
You know, again, I, I always like to purchase and use local vendors and, and business owners if we can. I assume that this is also in line with state bid.
Yeah, so normally, I get a quote as well from statewide, which is the state bid pricing. The Dodge Durangos are too new, and the state bid pricing hasn't come out yet.
Okay.
GSA Auto Choice is, I believe it's the CUE pricing.
Okay.
So, they, they go out and get a competitive bid as well.
I do have some comments to Ms. Whipke. Well, I had the opportunity to, as the safety chair, to meet with the chief and a couple of officers to look at the difference between the vehicles, and I will say, they had me try to sit down in the backseat of the Charger, the current. Physically impossible for me to sit in that backseat. I was shocked. I knew it would be tight, but I, I was really surprised. So they had the Durango there, and I was able to sit with probably three inches extra space with my knees. So to me, that, that was a big point. Also, one of the officers I spoke with pointed out, he showed me his, the inside of his trunk, and he really couldn't quite fit all of his equipment in, in the trunk, and in the Durango, he'll really easily fit all of it. So, there's those benefits, and I was a little bit skeptical because the, the Durango is between $5,000 and $6,000 more than another Charger. But speaking with the Fred Martin salesman, he pretty much assured me that SUVs have a lot higher trade-in value. So my hope and opinion is that for the first vehicle, we're going to be paying $5,000 or $6,000 more. But if we continue with these, it should be a wash, if, if not even maybe a little bit better because of the trade-in values. So for that, I, I would recommend it. I think it was, I appreciate the chief taking the time with me. It was very educational, and I, I think it would serve Norton well.
Thank you, Mr. Towesley. I, and it seems to me, if there was that much difficulty putting prisoners in and out of the back of the Durangos, there's a safety issue there, not only for the prisoner, but for the police officer as well. If they're trying to wrestle somebody into the back of that car, that creates a safety problem. And again, it, it's, to keep our officers as safe as possible, it is, it is not worth a few thousand dollars, so.
Thank you.
This time, I make a motion to add to the March 11th council's agenda for ordinance 38, 2019. Can I do these both together?
Yeah, yes, that's fine, if you want to do it that way.
As well as ordinance 39, 2019, is a consent agenda, since they're both, the only difference is the prices.
I will second that.
Thank you. Real call.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. Letter E, award of football field lighting bid to Haywood Electric. That is under property. It's ordinance 40, 2019. This is a bid to put lighting down here at Columbia Woods Park by the football field. Right now, that bid has come in at $142,000 and some odd dollars. Does administration want to approach that, or do you want me to ask some questions first?
Oh, that's, oh, that's. So, many of you may have noticed that there's a, several light poles in the, in the park, and the football team was, the parents and some other folks of the football organization were, were trying to get some lighting. One of the concerns I had, not with their effort, please, I just, my genuine nature of being- of being cautious, is they're gonna put light poles up, they had some folks that were gonna donate, a lot of effort, and my concern was, what use will they have to the city, right? Can we get some use out of it for the city purposes? And are, you know, is there a better way for us to do it? Now, I remember we had some money left over last year because we didn't spend all our appropriations, we transferred some of that money. This 142 is a very worst-case scenario. My understanding is, there is some significant work amongst the football parents themselves to get most of this work donated, so that's why it's a worst-case scenario. As of even last week, there was, it was dropped $5,000. But I didn't want to send it to council because the bid was 142, and that we could come down from that, but really, when we look at this cost, it's a lot higher than what we anticipated to be.
So, when my girls were involved in cheerleading for the youth football, all the games were during the day, I assume that part of this request, at least from residents, would be so that they can do some games at night?
I don't think, it's not even, it's a practice issue. Like, they run out of daylight later in the year for practice. That's only part of it, it's not just football field lighting, mind you, it's to light the park as well. It's primarily, there's four poles around the football field, but it'll be bright enough that it'll light up the area. You know, we have festivals where, we had to rent light towers for the bicentennial. This will help us. They'll be individually switched, so we can turn on individual light poles. This is, really benefits more than just the football field.
And I understand that, and I don't want anyone to get me wrong, you know, I would love to, there are things in the city that are needs, and there are things in the city that are wants, that we have. And I would, I'd love to have all of the city parks with lights, restrooms, water, and we've talked about those things before. My concern is, is this is a lot of money, and really, at the end of the day, it serves a small population, that's gonna use, that's gonna use the park. I wish more people would use it. I mean, we just got done, well, let me look back through here. I mean, the first thing that comes to mind is we could pave a couple streets for $140,000.
This is in your land improvement fund, not in your street fund.
Okay, all right, fair enough. So it can't be used for that, is what you're saying?
But we can remove it out of there, can't we? We put it in there, and we said if we didn't use it...
No, I mean, to transfer money out of a special fund requires essentially a court order to do unused funds out of that fund.
I distinctly remember...
Land 410, is that land improvement?
410, yeah.
Land improvement, Land Improvement 410.
So I just wanna be sure before we start talking about this and debating this. What you're saying is this money is coming out of that special, special fund?
That's right.
And that, once that is put in that fund, and how was it put there, council put it there?
Council put it there by transfer.
And once council puts it there, we can't take it back out, we gotta use it for that.
Yeah, so there's very limited rules if you disband the fund, and this is where the franchise fees go, the cable franchise fees, and it funds the park system centrally. That fund would have to no longer have a purpose, and then once that occurs, you can go to the court and say, hey, we have a leftover balance, please let's transfer. But while there's, you know, continuing use of it, that money's sort of lockboxed into that special use.
So that money went into that fund from the cable franchise fees?
It was a general fund transfer at the end of the year. A portion, there was, the transfers we did at year-end last year, a portion of those transfers went into the land improvement fund.
And that was money that we had not expended last year?
That's correct. So someone to the road program, we can get back...
I remember that we split it up amongst various funds, expecting that we would use it for various things.
That's right.
Okay.
With the understanding that, obviously, any contract gets awarded has to come back to council, which is where we are today.
Okay, so now, this particular fund is used for land improvement, is what you're saying? What's that defined as?
Really good question.
Okay.
It's a really good question. So I have to go back and look at the original legislation. I know traditionally we've used it for parks, park improvements. I don't know if that's the only limitation of the ordinance. I don't know the answer.
I mean, you know, I would like to know that, I mean, look, if we can't legally take it out and use it for streets or sidewalks or whatever, I get it, if we can't do that. Be a little more careful about where we put leftover funds, I guess, in the future, possibly. But I would like to know what we can use it for, because there might be something else that we may wanna use it for as opposed to the lighting. Again, don't get me wrong, I mean, you know, we need to take care of our, of our parks and our recreation and stuff, that's an important thing, but it just seems like, I had sticker shock, is there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President. Actually, it was this past January with Ordinance 6, 2019, that we moved this money over into 410. There were like four different sections where money was transferred over, and that one was labeled various improvement projects, which I specifically asked what these various projects were, and it was broken down to, I believe it was to improve the administration building, I don't have them written in front of me. Part of it was for lighting for the football field, and there was another part of it that was going somewhere, so we didn't actually, it was just a lump sum put there that we could use or not use. Now, maybe I'm misinterpreting this, but to me, the only reason that that ordinance got passed that day, the way, the following week, the way it did with emergency language, was because we needed to pay for the insurance on a worker by the end of the month, that was the main thing, we had to get that passed for. And we didn't have to use this money. We're just putting it there, but we weren't bound to it. But now it almost sounds like, well, if you don't use it for putting these lights in, it gets us to sit there anyway.
No, that's, well, a couple things. First, I mean, I think we were pretty clear upfront, based on your questioning, that we were coming back with this request for football lighting. Second is, the land improvement fund's used for park purposes, so park purposes are pretty broad, and we can interpret it, you know, depending on what the ordinance says, pretty broadly. So it's not that the money's lost forever and it's a very specialized purpose, if it's not used for football lights, it could be used for park purposes in the future, whatever that means.
Right.
Right, so I mean, that money's there, but I just wanna make it clear that I think we intended to bring, the administration intended to bring forward that contract, which is why it's here, right? Council has the ultimate say, you approve the contracts, you know, we're just following through in what we said we were gonna do.
Right. Do I remember correctly that at one, when we were first talking, and I do remember talking about the football lighting, but do I remember that we were thinking it was gonna be around $90,000?
The lighting is $90,000.
Okay.
Okay, now, again, we added a crane, which we felt having a certified operator put the lights in was the most appropriate choice. And again, they're trying to get the rest of these services donated, but until they're solidified as donations, we were reluctant to say they were getting donated. So we wanted with full transparency to say, this is what the total cost would be if there's no donation included.
What, what other things do we have in the hopper for other, other parks, fields, baseball, soccer, whatever?
We have a request from the baseball team to replenish their dirt, which is, I think, $14,000, $15,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. We've had some other requests that we're talking with service clubs on what is our best use of resources. We're trying to push their efforts towards maybe a pavilion in a specific park that doesn't have any place to sit. Another project that Larry has undertaken, we have purchased new benches, new tables, handicap-accessible tables for Pavilion 3, CW3. Now, they haven't been built yet, we're kinda waiting, you know, for a specific day to do that, but we have spent some money on that this year. One of the things we identified in that fund that we transferred was making the city hall handicap accessible, putting the push-button doors so that it become more friendly to But as of the park specific, I mean, there's one pavilion, we did some, we put a garage door on a pavilion, we've done work in Loyal Oak, we've been trying to spread it around a little bit, but this was our...
So, I mean, we've done, we've done a lot of maintenance things at various parks and various other things, but this is, this is really the big expenditure.
What we've discussed administratively is, going forward in 2020, is asking you all to budget a specific amount for a citywide park master plan, so that the Parks Board and others who want to interject what they think we should be doing in our park improvements can plan out our parks appropriately. And, well, we haven't got there yet, but the plan is, in 2020, you all would budget a specific amount of money to do a master plan for our park system.
Before we put too much more in, into the park system?
Right.
And then find out that we shouldn't have put it there, whatever, I mean, the idea is to get a plan in place, and before we move too much more forward.
Right. How much is in this particular fund, do you know?
$440?
With the transfer, there's $350,000.
Let's not forget about Helmick Park that's sitting over there like a little orphan.
When you guys are done, I'll have a few...
But I agree with Mr. Kernan, this is a lot of money. I would have liked to have, I know that we said the one-liner almost, it was in the minutes concerning putting some lights down at the football field, and then when I read this on Friday, I was sitting there, what is this, where did it come from? I would have liked to have had a little bit more heads up, since it seems like you've been talking to the football people as well, but I know they all want lights, they all wanted bathrooms too, we couldn't do that.
Mr. Kernan? So as of the January cash position report, I haven't seen the February yet, it was, there was $477,000 in that fund. Unencumbered.
I do have a couple of comments, if I can. Would it be safe to assume there's no facilities that the schools could allow them to practice at?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm asking if the schools have facilities where they could practice, because what I'm getting out of this is this is mainly for practice. And as, you know, as Mr. Kernan said, to justify $140,000 so people can practice is, that's hard to justify for me. So I guess my question is, does the schools have places where they can practice? I know in the past, they had a championship game that was able to be played at the stadium, which I advocate strongly for, I mean, our taxpayers paid for that stadium. I think our residents, including the youth football, should be able to use that as well, not being part of the school board, just my opinion. But yeah, I guess that's my question, is can the schools furnish them any place to practice?
Everyone?
I had one more.
Okay, go ahead.
How's this gonna affect our plan with Gardiner on, on the electric bills and stuff? Since if you had lights running down there, that's obviously going to raise our bill, and are we still gonna be able to make our difference in savings to be able to cover that payment? Has anybody thought about that?
Their LED lights, they have very limited power draw, and they're really not more than a 20-amp service, according to the electrician.
And I have one other question. When we say that this was bid, was this one of these, the RFQs, or was this actually bid out?
Publicly bid project, meaning it was publicly advertised in accordance with the
One moment, yeah.
Mr. Gaynor?
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got several questions, and I'll, if it's all right, I'd like to just go over them one at a time, if I could. Start with Mr. Fowler, you suggested that you brushed over, I heard, but I didn't quite grasp everybody, the thing you said about the person who, or the people who requested the lighting. Could you repeat that, please?
We've had meetings with members of the parents of the football group.
Okay, all right, so...
And they're out there, they're gonna put poles up, they're gonna put wooden poles in the park.
I'll get to that, I've got some other, if they are the ones that suggested it, then they also gave you those reasons, as you said, they had for, like, for the increased lighting in the park, and you said that they would help the lighting of the park?
No, I never said that that committee said anything about lighting the park, that was the ancillary benefit of putting lights on the football field.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
It has nothing to do with that committee.
Okay, my, the, I went down there and looked around at the park after dark and before and everything, and I, just in my personal opinion, I think the park is well lit. We've got some brand-new pole lights, overhead lighting, we're adding to the tennis court lighting, and as far as insulating, or whatever the word is, lighting for the park, I really don't think that that's gonna do that much, because they're not gonna be on all the time, and when we have things like the cider fest there, some of the vendors have their own lighting, and all those pole lights are on, I remember vividly they're being bright down there without lighting on the fields, but that's okay. My other question, one of them was the same thing as I think Charlotte or Joe or somebody asked about the, does the, do these parents that suggested we put these lights in, do they have plans for having night games such as night tournament games? Or how is the benefit, the $142,000 benefit, gonna be justified, you know, as a payback in benefits to, to the community as a whole? Was there anything said about them increasing the nighttime operations there, other than practice?
We've not discussed other...
Okay, that's what I sort of thought. Also, I'm not sure this is gonna be in line, but I just wondered if it's actually been discussed, that the football program has about half, from what I can gather from numbers, of the participants of, such as the soccer program, and yet would receive so much more support with this $142,000, there would be quite an addition to the support to the football program for those lighting situations, as what the soccer and other programs, not only soccer, but baseball. The way I'm, my figure is, if they're any ways close, the soccer program itself has twice as many, more than twice as many participants as football, baseball, and basketball, if you figure the figures, total people participating. So, I know without discussion on it, that there's already been remarks made that why are we spending this kind of money for the football program, when there's been, as someone else mentioned, requests for soccer and for other things, but that's just a thought for people. I'm not against helping the football program, I've worked on it in the past, my wife and I, and another couple ran the concession stand for a couple, three years, we worked on it, so I've sort of done my little turn at the football program, so I'm not knocking them at all, I'm not begrudging them one penny, other than the fact that that's a terrible lot of money, an awful big amount of money to spend on lighting for the football field that I personally don't think will ever receive the benefit back from it, just for the, for the added games or whatever that the football program might participate in. I'm, I think they might have tournaments here of a night maybe or something. I don't know their plans. I haven't, nobody, I don't know if that's been discussed even. So I'm, I'm sort of skeptical as to whether we would get, keep going back to the hundred and forty two thousand dollars worth of benefits from it. One final thing is I see the four, the four telephone poles that are down here and I've read the bids on this. And the bids in their totality add up to a hundred and forty two thousand and they start out with them. The largest figure being ninety six thousand, which includes steel poles. And all the purchasers or whatever you call them, the, the brackets and everything that hold the lights and everything, comes out to around ninety six thousand on that bid. So if we're going to eliminate the steel poles, which in my mind would be the biggest percentage, you're not going to eliminate the steel poles. Is that correct or?
No, those, those poles are if the football team puts their own lighting up. They're, they're, they're out there trying to do their own lighting. So they're gonna use wooden poles. So the question I have is when they deteriorate and something happens, who's responsible for those? So I, this is why I'm, I brought forward the steel poles. Because they're, they're installed by, you know, as, as a package. They're already rewired, pre-wired.
I understand.
All those things come, you, you, it's not, this was a package purchase.
I, I seen that, Mr. Fowler. I'm not, I, I'm not knocking the steel poles. I just meant when you mentioned that they had brought some poles to use for their lighting, was you saying that the, the portions of this bid, part of it was gonna be put on those wooden poles?
No, sir.
So those wooden poles are not for the lighting for the football field?
That was the football parents and, and some donations from First Energy to, to start their own field lighting process.
Okay, so they applied at First Energy and they got those poles and then you guys come up with an idea to go ahead and get pricing on the steel poles and stuff because it would be a better idea, correct? Well, that's, that's all the questions I really have about it.
You've given me another one.
I, I can, I, you can ask all the questions. I personally, I can just tell you I'm not in favor of.
I, I, I'm just kinda confused here that they're gonna put up their own lights is what they're saying and they've already got the poles down there. How does that work when it belongs to the city and not the football people?
Did they, did they get permission to put those?
We had discussed it. They had some donations and we were.
And, and so that was something.
There was not been a finalized plan.
Okay. But that was something that they had started working on because they wanted lights and you said, look, see what you can get together and then we'll talk about what we can do.
Right.
And am I kinda summing that up the way?
You are.
It probably went, okay. Did Parks Board look at this? Okay. Would it be useful for Parks Board to take a look at this and see if they can come up or if the city can come up with a less expensive option? That still accomplishes kind of what we wanna see down there. You know, I, I just think that since we have a board that kinda does or is supposed to do that kind of stuff, why not?
Just understand they're an advisory board.
I know, and I understand that, absolutely. But, but they can, they can look into that kind of stuff. They can advise and the administration can say, we don't like your advice or we do and we'll take it to council or we won't. And then, you know, if we don't get anywhere there, I guess we can make a final decision. I mean, I guess what I'm saying, the, the long and the short of it is without looking into this a little bit more, I can't justify spending a hundred and forty two thousand dollars on lights down at the football field.
Or moving it forward to even think about voting on.
I mean, I, I, what I would say is, is that we're just gonna, we're just gonna leave this in this committee at this point. There, I'm not gonna make a motion to move it out of the committee. So unless someone else in the committee does, it's just gonna sit there and we can take a look at maybe some other options. I, I mean, I'm certainly open to talking about that. Don't get me wrong. I'm not. I'm not totally against it, believe me. But I wanna kinda maybe talk about it a little bit more and see if there are any other options. So is there any other discussion regarding this particular item? Okay, then we'll move on to letter F, taking no, no action on that. The cemetery price breakdown, we did get some information, I see that came through. Regarding the breakdown, we have what, about two hundred and thirty plots at this point, Mr. Fowler, go ahead.
Well, I have some more information.
Oh, cool, okay, good.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Some research done.
Thank you.
Ron had done some before.
Ron had pulled some, some of this information before. Just to break down a green lawn, Lakewood, just a couple cemeteries, we call it Wadsworth. As you can see, Copley and Norton are comparable. But we're, we're significantly less than everybody else. I know, just, I had this information, we gathered it, thought you would. There's also, in case you want to, there's some other sheets attached that include, you know, a little bit more detail of the costs associated with, you know, like Copley Township Cemetery fees and Elmwood and there's one other one there.
Okay.
Lakewood.
Does, um, does council want to maybe look at this at the next committee of the whole? So we have some time to take a look at these numbers or you wanna discuss it now?
I would just like to ask a question. When we're comparing these prices, now I know Green Lawn, that's, doesn't belong to a city that's privately owned, isn't it?
Correct.
And what about Lakewood and Wadsworth and I see, us and Copley are about the same price. Does Copley actually maintain a cemetery themselves?
Yes.
So all the rest of these are private cemeteries?
No, I believe Wadsworth and Elmwood are both municipal run cities. I'm sorry, cemeteries. Cemeteries. I, I tried calling Akron. Akron doesn't have cemeteries. So the only two, I mean, these are relatively close in proximity to us. So I tried to pick as close to Norton as I could.
On the first page, Mr. Fowler, on the first page, it says that you figure out a fee schedule structure quickly, which will also include putting a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars per plot into the perpetual maintenance fund. Does that mean every time we sell a?
Right.
Plot, you would, where would the fifteen hundred or a thousand come from?
Should go, well, no, the person buying the plot.
Would also.
Would pay, let's just say, let's use round numbers. It's five eighty eight now. Say, let's say we charge six hundred extra. That six hundred dollars should be earmarked to a cemetery fund that we could draw interest off of, because I think there's what, three hundred maybe left? I apologize, my, it's kinda been a while. Two thirty, okay. So two thirty times six hundred is only about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That would then sit in a fund. Because as it stands right now, your general fund is paying for your maintenance at your cemeteries. Because the general fund pays for whoever's cutting the grass, who's ever working out there. So the perpetual maintenance fund would be an interest generator that could, or would offset the costs. And you're not, it's late now, right? This is something hopefully you set up soon, early. Because then that perpetual maintenance sits in that fund and you, you just draw off the interest rather than the principal. And gives you money longer term to, to take care of the maintenance.
The reason I was asking that is I, I'm involved in a couple of cemetery funds that we pay into for a family and stuff. And I'm sure that when those plots were purchased and when the people were buried in them, the perpetual maintenance fund was adequate to cover that, they thought, to cover that, those plots. However, throughout the years, they've came back to us, everyone who's buried there. And they don't demand, but they ask because of increased costs for this or that. And, and we normally end up every year or two at least, we end up, you know, kicking in another twenty five bucks or fifty bucks or something. And when you get that small amount times all the people that are buried there, it increases that fund and it's good for another couple of years and then, or five even maybe, and then they come back for a little more. I would suggest that when we do set this up, and I think I'm a hundred percent behind setting up some type of perpetual fund, that we should put something in there that would, when they buy the plot, they would agree to maybe, I don't know, a, a small percentage increase in ten years or fifteen years or, or time period. I don't know what the percentage would be or whatever. It could be looked at. Because what looks good today monetarily is not gonna be worth a nickel in fifty years or forty years. And hopefully Norton will be here, but we won't.
Well, I mean, just think a hundred and forty thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand, whatever that number is, in today's dollars, that seems like a lot of money.
Yeah.
You're right, forty years from now, that's not gonna be much.
Not at all.
You know.
But I would suggest that they had something along those lines to it. And the only other question I had was, are all two hundred and thirty of these are not in Western Star? Are some of them in Norton Center or someplace else or where, where are those two hundred and thirty plots?
I think they're Western Star. I'll confirm, but I, I think she told me they're in Western Star. I got an email from her.
So I thought that Norton Center was, was full. I, I didn't.
I'll follow up to see if there were any plots there.
I, I see a lot of vacant area at Norton Center. And I was wondering if, if someone actually knows why those plots are still vacant. Are they not suitable for a plot? Are they wet, say? Is a water table three feet below the ground? What's, what's the story on the, on the fact that there's not, it's not nearly full? I mean, as far as physically full.
I'll ask.
Oh, okay.
Anything else do we want to discuss this again at the next committee of the whole after we've had a chance to look at it a little bit further?
Makes sense to me.
All right, that's what we'll do then. We'll put that on, on topics for the next work session, please, Carrie.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Is there anything else to come before committee of the whole, Mr. Fowler?
Mr. Kernan, I apologize.
That's okay.
As you know, we've been working diligently to come up with a solution. And to let you know that as of today, Copley agreed to a jail proposal with Barberton. I would like to have a little bit of discussion on kinda where we were and how we've gotten to where we are. So prior years, Norton had paid a per bed rate to the city of Barberton. And I apologize, I don't know what that number is. So this year, Barberton had requested us look, evaluate the, how we, how we proportionally pay for jail services. The city of Norton uses the Barberton jail nine point two five percent. So, so what we did is I asked for all the bed nights that our prisoners would stay and asked for the total bed nights for the jail. Came up with a formula that we would pay nine point two five percent. I mean, it seems reasonable that we would pay our portion of the cost to operate the jail. We came up with that nine point two five figure. And going forward, the previous year usage will dictate the cost for the next year. So this year, if we use the jail twelve percent, we will pay twelve percent of the cost. I will get everyone a breakdown, but essentially this is what it comes down to. The city has agreed, or the city of Norton, the administration has agreed that the number of seventeen thousand four hundred eighty two dollars will be this year's agreement. Now going forward, that would of course be readjusted with every prisoner, or the prison population. I would like to get an ordinance to council entering into this agreement. As I said, Copley today had a special meeting and entered into the agreement. They have chosen a little bit higher figure. But, but as of right now, I don't think I can ask you to commit to more than the, just the jail cost at this time.
And would you be looking to get that ordinance to us and perhaps have discuss it at committee of the whole?
Yes.
Next council meeting and, and move it forward then? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
If you could possibly get the information to us as soon as possible this week, so that council has an opportunity to look at it, approach you with any questions.
We'll have it tonight, oh, tomorrow. I, I think it's safe to say we can have it tomorrow. We have, we have all the figures and everything. We're, to be candid, we were, we were kinda waiting for, for a decision from Copley this morning. They had a special meeting this afternoon. We, we all three need to go together. If, if they chose a different path, it was gonna be a big question of, of how we proceeded, to be honest.
Right, right. Yeah, so I think that sounds good. Council, if they.
I just wanted to ask if I could, Joe, Mr. Fowler, you said seventeen thousand. I remember that figure when you gave us the paperwork on it. That sounds like a dumb question. I mean, maybe a dumb question, but are you saying that we're going to be paying seventeen thousand for the entire year plus so much per bed night?
No, no, no. Does away with the bed nights.
Is the total.
Is the total for the year.
I think that's a.
And it's a little bit more than we paid last year.
Either way, I think that's a good price.
But I will say this, all of us sat down, the mayor, Ron, Justin, the chief and I, and we evaluated, you know, I brought to you two proposals last week and I, I told you it was out of the norm for what we did and I appreciate it. But we evaluated those. And as I told you, keeping an officer on the street is the most important thing that we can do administratively. And having an officer transport a prisoner to Cuyahoga Falls, to the sheriff's office, while on a, on the surface, those aren't, the, the Cuyahoga Falls is cheaper per hour or per night. But by the time you factor in three trips to Cuyahoga Falls, which is three hours for an officer, it, it really adds up. And, and this is our best option. And while it might be a little bit more than we paid last year, when you compare it to the hour or the one twenty three that the sheriff charges us, we're actually seeing a less expensive per night charge than what we would get from the sheriff. Now, we still have the backup. If something would happen, we have an agreement with the sheriff, which I, I think is a good thing as well. Shows goodwill towards the county. But, but in the end, we're, we're keeping our officer. They're just running him down to Barberton. They're still fairly close to the city. And, and really, this is the best option for us, even though we're, we're agreeing to pay, I think, six thousand more than we paid last year.
But that, is that also accepted by Barberton? And I mean, this is all agreed to?
This was agreed to. This was their proposal. And I'll, I'll be glad to get everybody a copy of this. And yes, you'll, you'll see, we're going with a jail nineteen cost.
The other nice thing is, is that with the prisoners being right there in Barberton, it's a matter of taking them upstairs and then taking them back down. You're not taking them outside. You're not transporting them all over the place. It's, it's very.
And it's less risky for.
Risky, yes.
But it's less risky for officer, but even transporting, you, you worry about somebody hitting, hitting them, you know, running into our car. It's more mileage. There are a lot of factors that, that went into this. And, and we really do think from the administrative standpoint that this is the best option for us going forward.
And Chief can explain it better, although I sent him home because I forgot we were talking about this. Some of the low level warrants we don't necessarily execute on and because we don't wanna pay the cost of housing prisoners overnight. If, since we're paying upfront, he actually thinks it'll be better for the administration of justice in the city because you can execute on those warrants.
Right, right.
Even though they're lower, lower level.
Yeah.
And house them overnight.
Okay.
Because it's already included.
So.
Thank you. I, I would agree that this seems like the best idea. But what about this transportation cost? Why isn't, we're just not including that in with the seventeen thousand?
We're, we're, we're just, we administratively have agreed that the jail cost is what we're agreeing to pay right now.
So we're only gonna be paying this seventeen, this transport cost is not even involved in this?
We are not agreeing to that at this time. If that, if we, if, if, and I, that's a big capital I, capital F. If we decide to go that way, we will come back to council and, and bring you a different contract.
And we would be, I assume, responsible for any medical costs or anything on top of that seventeen thousand sum that the, that the prisoners might need overnight or whatever. Someone has a heart attack and they go to the hospital, wouldn't we have to pay that?
Not always. Actually.
And or the patient.
They, they, they. They, 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 they have a procedure in Barberton that handles that and we historically have not been responsible for healthcare. If they're charged with a felony, then that goes to the sheriff, uh, but you're correct, if, if there would be someone under our care, we would be responsible.
That's another ballgame. Um, di- didn't we actually pay like three thousand something a week to keep them open currently?
We only paid three thousand for three weeks.
For th- that total of three thousand?
Total, right, and we're gonna take that off of this amount. Well, right, one week, but, but it's coming off of this amount, so we're gonna pay fourteen thousand.
Okay.
But, but we want the contract to say seventeen-four-eighty-two.
The full amount, right, so we have a basis to run from.
Right, and, and, and base the bed, you know, based on the number of beds used versus the total number of beds, that's what we pay.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question just for clarification? Mr. Fowler, I've, I heard two different things and it's probably my own fault, but if you could just clarify for me. Um, nine, was it nine and a half percent, whatever it was, nine and a half, nine-point-six percent is what we used last year.
Nine-point-two-five.
Okay, so that's what we pay this year. One thing I heard was we pay based on last year, but then I thought I heard that can change if we, the figure usually is like twelve percent, does that change next year?
Next year, the following year, so let's say next year, we have twelve percent of the prisoners.
We have it this year, that affects next year?
Correct, correct. That, that would be next year. So what we've asked really is, um, we've talked about quarterly adjustments or whatever, we think a year-end is the best, but to, to look at a snapshot of the previous year, probably in November, when we're doing our budget, so that we can ha- allocate our funds appropriately and, and our, that was my understanding going forward, that in November, they will tell us what our usage has been and that'll be our cost. So if it's twelve percent and the budget is, well, it'll go up, I'm sure it'll go up a little bit, it'll go, you know, it's gonna go up three percent or whatever, then it would be, we would owe twelve percent plus.
Right, I mean, at the end of the day, any agreement, and when you actually see the agreement, I'm sure this will be clarified, we'll have the ability to opt out of any agreement, so if it gets to the point where the jail's either too expensive or, or usage, we're not in agreement with our usage, then we can always opt out, which is why we're signing our backup contract with the county in Cuyahoga Falls in the first place, so. But yeah, the idea is there's a, there's a yearly adjustment to true up the usage based on how people are actually using the jail, which makes sense.
So they are confident that this, these figures with Copley, us and whoever else will, will maintain their jail for.
Right. Well, and, and we're, we're paying on usage, so like, uh, Mr. Markey said, said that Chief, um, said earlier though that there could be a possibility that we'll be able to utilize a little bit more, so then naturally if we utilize it a little bit more, then that will drive the cost up, seeing how we're paying for usage, so at the end of the year though, then it'll just, it'll, um, work itself out.
Just one, one other point of note on this, that, that these aren't all the jail users, just so we're clear, and, and, and those people who are not privy to this agreement, which is Copley, Norton and Barberton, we're gonna pay a hundred-and-twenty dollars per night. So there, there's some other work that we're doing on that, that, that that would be proportionally reduc- reducing our costs for the following year, but I, I didn't wanna get into all that, but, but I think you should know that people who are not privy to the agreement are actually gonna pay more than we are, a hundred-and-twenty dollars a night is more than what we pay.
So right now, basically what we got before council is we're gonna keep, we'll be able to keep Barberton jail open, it's a safer, better option and what we're doing is we're paying for our usage and we adjust it at the end of the year for the following year.
Following year, that's, that's the easiest way to sum it up. I think that's bullet point, perfect.
All right. Any other discussion? Um, do we want to go ahead and put this on committee of the whole for next week? Do we, does that need a motion?
No, it's just.
I think I can just do that, yeah.
As you see fit, but I, yeah, that's our request, is for you to discuss.
Why don't you go ahead and, and make a note to put that on committee of whole for next week before the council meeting? Any further, um, items to come before committee of the whole? Topics for next work session, I see we've got the snow plowing services for seniors on here, I know I asked, Carrie asked you to add something else and now I forget what it was, what did I tell you?
The cemetery price breakdown.
Oh, the cemetery pricing, yes, is there anything else? Um, okay. Anything else to come before council this evening? Hearing nothing, uh, have a motion to adjourn?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
[inaudible]